Number two would be my, I have received.
Okay, we're live now. Chair Smith.
I will do that.
We're ready, Tootie.
Good morning. I will call to order the April 15th, 2021 business meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, staff support today. Christina Twilliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Roll call on Zoom. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
In the hearing room, Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schull?
Here.
Commissioner Savis is on his way, traveling here. Chair Smith?
Aye. Thank you, Gary. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty for justice and health.
Thank you very much. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, we have wildfire updates. Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management, will present. Go ahead, please, Nancy.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone. So first with the ice storm. I just want to let everyone know that we do know that the governor sent the letter to FEMA Region 10, and FEMA Region 10 has to review the letter, and then it does get sent to the president's desk to see if we're going to get a federal declaration for the winter ice storm. So as soon as we hear back from that, I will certainly let everyone know that here. Going into wildland fire, I just want to mention upfront that outdoor burning has been banned here in Clackamas County by our Fire Defense Board. The burning ban goes into effect immediately and will last through April 19th, 2021, which is Monday, and then at that time, they will reevaluate. And that came from the Fire Defense Board Chief, Jim Davis. It's just a reminder that our fire seasons are starting earlier and earlier.
Wow.
So with the wildland fire, excuse me, we have had some more activity with housing, and with our building codes permits, we have more electric permits that we've done. We've done now 43. And entrance to the driveways, which is fairly new, and we have three of those permits that are now being asked for. So again, that shows that rebuilding is continuing in the burn area. For our debris management, our personal property debris removal, which we call PPDR, the debris removal contractor through ODOT has received work orders for 22 properties in Clackamas County, which I did talk about last week. And now the debris removal is scheduled to begin on April 19th, which again is Monday. The contractor has removed, actually, they removed hazardous trees on two properties yesterday, and they had to do that before they could even do the evaluation of that particular property and the environmental assessments. So they are also monitoring and consulting and looking at, and marking hazardous trees on private property in order to get those down as well. Clackamas County, we're going to be reaching out to our community to determine if others still want to sign on to a right of entry for debris removal, and we'll be doing that for about a month and a couple of weeks. We plan on closing that on May 31st, which means after that date, a right-of-entry form would no longer be available to them, and they would not be able to participate in this program, which is free to the property owner. So we're going to get a lot of information out about that because we want to make sure everyone knows that this is still an option. And that is what I have for wildland fire update.
Gary?
Any questions by commissioners? Not seen any. All right, Nancy already gave the ice storm updates, so we'll jump to COVID-19 updates. Go ahead, Nancy.
All right, thank you. So Phillip is not here today, so it's just me. So Christina, yeah, thank you. So here in Clackamas County, we have just over 15,000 total cases, which is 448 cases up from last week, and we now have a total of 202 deaths, and that is, it has increased by one. Multnomah County has 34,438 with 566 deaths, which has increased by two deaths over the last week. They went up 662 cases. Washington County is 23,145 with 229 deaths. They have went up by 459 cases and one death. Next slide, please. So the data that we just got in on Monday for the two-week period, which is called the warning week, next week is actually the week if counties are going to change levels, it'll be that next week. So we are now at 170.8 per 100,000 population, and the test positivity rate for us is now at 6.0. So just to mention here that when we think about, like, possibly going to extreme risk, which is 200,000 over 100K, because now that that hospital piece has been put in there as part of that metric, we should not, unless the hospitals start filling up, we should not be going into extreme risk, but we'll keep an eye on that as well.
Nancy, let's say that the hospital metric was not used. How many cases per 100,000 of our population would it have to be to go to extreme risk? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I would have to look. I know we need to be under an average of 30 a day to be in medium risk, but I can look that up.
Yeah, Paul.
So that change seems to be, number one. It sounds like a welcome change, but when was that, last week or the week before?
For our change? Yeah, we changed.
The change on the hospital capacity metric?
It was last week.
Well, last week, okay.
I know, yeah.
Christina?
It was just last week that the governor announced that.
Christina?
Commissioner Fisher, has her hand raised?
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I'm probably okay, saving my questions till the end. I just wanted to get in queue. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll call in you on the end.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next slide, please. So the case count by week, of course, we do like to show this graph because it shows, you know, like Labor Day, you know, the holidays and those types of things, and when we start seeing spikes again. So we went up to 438 this week from 292. And yeah, just to point out that, you know, we had the holiday weekend, the last, the first weekend of April was Easter, I think. So we do expect to see some cases that might rise from that as well. The next slide is the hospital capacity. We did put this slide back in. We had taken it out for a little bit, but because we do have that new metric, we're going to continue to put this in. We're not seeing any major changes in the hospitals at this time. So you see that, you know, we went from like 75 beds on 411 to, on 412 to 63. But again, those fluctuations, you know, it can have to do with accidents, traumas, et cetera. This is not just about COVID. So next slide, please. Our outbreak update. Just to take a look there, we have, last week, we had 69 on 47, 412, we have 74. We have an increase, obviously, there with the schools, four there. Our workplaces, that went down from 27 to 26. And as Phillip has mentioned earlier in other sessions too, it takes a very long time to clear out cases before they actually come off of this list. So we're seeing some movement there, some of these outbreaks coming off. Next slide, please. This is the COVID-19 patients in the Northwest Oregon hospitals. And again, so in 98, so that's what we have in this region that is, that are in the hospitals that are related to COVID. And you'll see that we are, I don't want to say that's flatlining, but we're not seeing, we didn't see a lot increase this week, so we're kind of steady on that one. Next slide. Johnson &amp; Johnson. Of course, the breaking news this week was Johnson &amp; Johnson has been paused their vaccine. So that happened as of April 13th, which of course was Monday. I did read in the media yesterday that they are planning on having it paused at least for another week. We have not received any information yet from OHA directly on that, but it was in all of the media sources yesterday. So during this pause, it has caused us to reevaluate and even change some of the vaccine that's going into certain clinics so we wouldn't have to cancel those clinics. But then as we start looking out, we're not going to be able to have as many clinics as we usually would have if we'd had the J&amp;J. So during this time, we've had an advisory committee looking at all the practices and reviewing the reports. Of course, we have paused our J&amp;J, and we had 7,000 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson that have been administered in the county, and at this time, we have not had any reports of blood clots. And we just want to remind everyone and the public that our top priority is vaccine safety, and as soon as we had heard, we met very early on Monday morning, I think I heard at 5:30, and talked about what that meant for us and what we were going to do. So here in Clackamas County, we take that very seriously. Next slide, please. Here in Clackamas County, we have 143,740 people that are vaccinated, and there you see the doses administered, which is almost 230,000, and the almost 34% of our county population has been vaccinated at this point, which is really good news. Next slide. So updated timelines for vaccine eligibility. You'll see there, April 19th, Phase II eligibility open statewide. So that's all Oregonians that are 16 and older. And again, eligibility does not mean availability. So we know that there's still a lot of frustration among the population trying to get a vaccine, and of course, with everything that's happening with Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's made that even more intense. And our next slide. So our vaccine scheduling. Just to remind everyone that there's some local opportunities in Clackamas County, and you can call to be on a waitlist and talk, and if you have other questions that you can't find on our website, you can call 503-655-8224. And the mass vaccination in clinics in Portland and other opportunities, go to getvaccinated.organ.gov in order to sign up there. And I also just want to let everyone know that we've partnered with Lakoswego Fire, and they are hosting community clinics for eligible frontline workers all across Clackamas County. The primary audiences are the restaurant workers and hotel and motel staff. Clackamas County Public Health, Environmental Health has set on appointment schedules through our distribution list and for the licensed facilitators, or I'm sorry, licensed facilities. So that is an ongoing project that we have too, to try to get all of our frontline workers an opportunity to get the vaccine. And that is my update for this morning.
Thank you, Nancy. Commissioner Fisher, do you have some follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I'm wanting, I don't like, Nancy, that we have increased by 30 cases per thousand since the last report, and I know you're not responsible for the bad news, but it's very frustrating. So before, when we went into the extreme risk category, the great concern was the level of just community spread that was not tied to an outbreak, which really took us backwards. How are we now compared to then? Do we have a great level of community spread, or when you have that chart with all of the outbreaks, are we able to trace the outbreaks to a known source?
So the last, I had those, the discussion about those numbers just last week, so I didn't have that discussion this week. Last week, it was nearing 40%, which is up from where it was closer to 30%. So we are seeing, you know, we're not be able to trace, for whatever reason, either they don't answer the phone, they don't provide information, whatever the reason may be. And sometimes people don't know where they truly got it. So it's closer to 40% than it is 30% at this time.
Okay, so right now, it's 40% is not traced to a known source, and then what was, and I, if you don't remember, it's okay, but I just want to, you can get me this information later. I'm wanting to understand, when we were at extreme risk, what was the percent that was not traced to a known source?
Yeah, and I don't remember that, so I'll have to ask.
I know, there's a lot of moving numbers, but I think that's a really important thing for us, even though that's not part of extreme risk, high risk, moderate risk on the metrics, it's really important for us to understand as policymakers, is it, how dangerous is it to go out if you aren't vaccinated? And then my next question is, okay, you answered that one. So the school outbreaks listed have gone up dramatically in that one graphic. Is that related to, is it still related to extracurricular activities or students getting together outside of the instruction hours?
Yes, Commissioner, it is, and I actually confirmed that this morning.
Okay. And then, pretty remarkable effort in, through the business recovery centers in getting the vaccines. I know through the Lakoswego Chamber, they were able to coordinate vaccines for frontline workers. I was actually at a restaurant on Friday night in Lakoswego, and the server had missed getting signed up, but I was able to actually just text the executive of our chamber and say, hey, do you have any openings to get her vaccinated on your Monday schedule? And they're like, yes, we had a cancellation, we'll get her in. So that sort of grassroots community for frontline workers, I think, is really great. So I really want to applaud that. And you said that Lakoswego Fire is going to be carrying that on?
Yes, and it's all through the county. It's not just in Lakoswego. They're working with us countywide.
Okay, so they'll be just sort of somewhat of a fast track for our servers and our bus drivers and our, I mean, our people that are out there in the public and part of that category?
Yes, as much as we can, we're making it available there and encouraging them, and also sending information out to the restaurant owners as well to try to get their people signed up.
Okay, I'm really happy that that's happening, because my big concern was, oh my gosh, yes, April 19th, everyone is eligible, but how will the people that need it the most, that are in the most, interface with the public, be able to have greater access?
And I think that's a good point, too. Our public health staff work really hard to try to be, you know, look at the, you know, equitable, and it's, so they're not just putting everything in like where everybody signs up. So we're doing some target audiences like those that are frontline workers so that we can get those populations, and we're not forcing them to go through that larger system. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then my other thing I've been thinking about, I was talking to Administrator Schmidt and trying to get my mind around, what kind of recommendations can we make to the governor's office as we recover? Because we still are, even though we have gone down from, we've gone from moderate risk to high risk, we're still in a recovery mode for COVID, and we, it's really hard for businesses to go on this yo-yo of, oh, I'm at 50% capacity, oh, I'm at 25% capacity, especially when you have 34% of Clackamas County's vaccinated. Those people could be really driving our economy, and I just would really like it if we could get some advice as policymakers, when we have conversations through AOC and with the governor, as to how are we, how can we make these metrics work practically to how we can continue to drive our economy, promote safety for people who don't have access to the vaccine? But we've got a shift now, we're in a different mode, and I know we have some really amazing thinkers that really understand what's happening on the ground level. So if we could borrow your brains some, and I'm not sure the best format to do that, but maybe at issues next week, we could come back with some ideas, or we could just keep the conversation going. So I just look to you, Gary.
Too soon for next week, but let me talk with Nancy, and I'll loop back to the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, just, just one clarification before I comment on what I wanted to speak to. We were in moderate prior to last week, and we went to high risk, not extreme, where we don't want to go as extreme. So I think there's maybe just a little bit of confusion there, so. And I'm, I think actually, our efforts and our conversation last week, and the focus on this, has brought in that hospital element into the metric now, so that's an improvement. And I think that gets to what you're, kind of what you're driving at a little bit, Commissioner Fisher, which, you know, I think that was our, our really concern and message last week. I do want to say that in my conversation with the governor on Friday, it was, it was clear that she recognized this age group, the 20 to 29, the after-school activities being the driver. And I think that's also reflected, because younger people don't have a lot of pretty existing conditions or healthier, which is why our hospital capacity is actually stable and just slightly falling, if I looked at the chart correctly. So I think the numbers are more favorable. Hopefully, we can just get the case counts down, but I think they're probably less likely to answer the phone. So, you know, unless we can have effective contract tracing, if they don't answer the phone, and I think that's going to be a challenge, it's, when we start looking at case outbreaks as a, as a metric, or putting so much emphasis on that, as perhaps maybe the age group. But anyhow, however we get there, I think there's a concern about making businesses or having businesses experience these, the uncertainty, and the fact that, you know, they're going to hire up, and then they're going to lay them off. And some of these folks that are getting laid off don't qualify for unemployment because they already expended that. They only worked for a few weeks. So it really puts the employees really far, in a far more greater hardship than, as well as the businesses, but this is something to think about.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I was going to save this for later, but it seems germane to the conversation right now. Tomorrow, the Metro Regional Solutions Advisory Committee that represents Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington Counties is meeting from 1:00 to 3:00. I am the governor's appointee on that committee, and it works closely with the Association of Oregon Counties. And the real key thing we're going to be talking about tomorrow is the overview of the governor's 10-point economic recovery plan and guiding principles. We'll be looking at what the greatest challenges are, opportunities for economic recovery, and also taking a look at which of the 10 points in the governor's economic recovery plan should be a priority for a region and why. So if you would like to email Tracy with any questions that you have about that, or any input you would like me to present, that would be absolutely wonderful. In preparation for this, I have not only been looking at our local opportunities, I've also been taking a look at the National Association of Counties websites to get a sense of regionally where other counties in our nation are spending that money. Oftentimes, small business support, nonprofit support, it goes to municipalities, tourism, behavioral health, and mental health, and those are just a few of the things that are popping up when I look at it from a national level. And again, tomorrow, we will be doing this at a local level, so if you have any questions or anything you think is a priority, I would be glad to carry that to the meeting. Thank you.
Martha, I would like you to make a report to our board on the outcome of that meeting next Tuesday. We will find a place for you, someplace, Gary, we will find a place for that, because we need, this is timely, we need to be updated as soon as possible. So send out the original 10 points to the commission.
Yes, and get me information today if you'd like to, or what your thoughts are, that would be great, and then I will report back the outcomes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Is that for all for our presentation, Nancy?
That's all I have.
All right. Still on the COVID topic, we are going to review the letter to the Congressional delegation about vaccines in Oregon, which you reviewed on Tuesday this week, and you asked for further edits. Staff has provided those edits, and the letter was sent to you, and it is posted online, so we're seeking your approval to finalize this letter today.
Gary, is it necessary to have signatures at the bottom?
It is, and I see that's missing, so.
Yeah, so just scrunch them in there, just have staff.
Would you like all five commissioners or just the chair?
Yes, I would like all five commissioners, thank you.
Provided as 5-0.
You're so funny. Okay, do we have any clarifying comments or questions on this letter to our delegation? May I have a motion?
Move to approve the letter?
Seconded.
Commissioner Savis has moved to approve. Commissioner Schull has seconded. Any further discussion on this? Christina, please call the poll.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to, for those who are watching or will be watching this tape in the future, the, what we just approved is a letter to our, basically to message to our federal delegation to ask for more vaccine dosages for Oregon because of our low hospital capacity per capita number. So we're just trying to influence and make sure we get a larger share.
Thank you, Paul, on that. We're going to move on. Gary?
All right, thank you, Nancy, very much. Next, this is not on the agenda, but this is a request of the board from yesterday, and that is to discuss the proposed transportation funding solutions for the interstate system in the Portland metropolitan area, Clackamas County Values Document. Staff has updated the document at your request after your policy session yesterday. That document is posted online, and it was emailed to you. We have staff present if you have any further questions, but the goal is to approve this today or make further edits.
Commissioners, Trent is here, he's going to come up and speak to that, and Dan Johnson is also in the room, if we have any further clarifying comments on that. Trent, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Smith, Commissioners. Gary introduced it perfectly. I'm here at your disposal, answer any questions.
Great. Last night, I read through the document, and I moved two words to a different section, rural and urban, because where we had, sometimes it's really hard when you're wordsmithing and you have, you're writing over the top of this and you're scratching out, so Trent moved those rural and urban transportation priorities just to a different section, and I think it has more impact where it was, was confusing. And that's the only, and he did that, and the new updated language is there. Commissioner Schrader, did you see that, and is that okay with you?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any, yes, Martha?
I'm fine with that, Chair.
Okay, good. Is there any other questions or comments for Trent Wilson? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve this document.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Schull has moved to approve the transportation value statement. Commissioner Savis has seconded. Any further discussion? I see Commissioner Schrader has her hand up.
Commissioner Fisher?
No, sorry, I just have not put that down from my first.
Yeah, and I'm, I apologize, Chair Smith, I tried to get my hand raised before there was a motion. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up, I think we're all on in alignment that we are very concerned about tolling having a disproportionate effect to Clackamas County residents, especially when you look at the map of Clackamas County, in the section of 205, they're looking at tolling. There aren't really other routes to get to where you're going. But I don't know about the very last statement, I really like it, and thank you, Trent, for putting that together. I just wanted to bring up the idea of visitors. For me, I don't, if they do some sort of value pricing or congestion pricing for people visiting Clackamas County, I don't have a problem with revenue going. I just want there to be some sort of equity for the people that live in Clackamas County and the businesses in Clackamas County, because we would be disproportionately affected. But I wouldn't have a concern necessarily for business, for visitors, so I'm just bringing that out.
Thank you.
But if it's the will of the board to have that language in there, I will support it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, so Trent, we modified that first bullet to take the urban rule out, and.
Oh, it's still in there.
No, the bullet's there, but the word urban rule is removed. It's placed at a different position in the letter, correct?
That's correct. We removed it from the fourth bullet, which was in that first section, and we put it in the second bullet of the second section. So you see it now, it says, maintain a transportation system for urban and rural residents that is dependable and predictable to attract new businesses and industry, dot, dot, dot.
My reason for that, if I may explain?
Oh, no, that's okay.
You know?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah, I just, I just want to give clarification. So I don't have my laptop, the battery died, so I'm a little bit, little bit handicapped here. Could you just read the fourth bullet of the first section now that it's modified?
Yes, it says, establish viable alternative transportation options that support the functionality of the interstate system, such as an accessible transit system in areas with inadequate service.
Okay, fine, I'm good to go.
Thank you. We have a motion, any more comments? Christina, take the poll, please.
First, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? I'll be on mute, Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Perfect. Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much for the hard work yesterday, Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Next, Commissioners, you will be meeting as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Christina, if you would please bring into the meeting Anne Lindstra, who joins you as a Housing Commissioner. She's on Zoom. And Chair Smith, if you would now announce, the board will be meeting as the Housing Authority.
I will now announce, the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board for the next item.
Christina, would you please? Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, we only have one item on the consent agenda. It's approval to execute Amendment Number One to the Contract Between Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Do Good Multnomah for the Case Management of Homeless Individuals and Families Participating in the Metro 300 Program. The total contract value increasing by $75,000, funded through the Health Share of Oregon. No general funds are involved.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item? May I have a motion?
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Ann Leenstra has moved for approval, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Christina, would you please call the poll?
Of course. Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Commissioner Ann Leenstra, for doing that for us today.
You're welcome.
I will now announce the board will adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Next, Chair Smith, is a presentation, National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week Proclamation. Cheryl Bledsoe, the Director of our county's 911 Emergency Communications Center, or CCOM, will present. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Bledsoe, and I'm the Director of the Clackamas 911 Agency. And it is my pleasure to bring before you a proclamation to recognize telecommunications here in Clackamas County. It is important to know here in Clackamas that we have two 911 centers, not just the one that serves Clackamas County that I oversee, but also the Lake Oswego Communication Center that serves Milwaukee, Gladstone, Milwaukee, West Lynn, and Lake Oswego. So it's my pleasure to bring before you this proclamation. We do this on an annual basis. The National Association of Telecommunicators recognizes April 11th through 17th, the second week in April, as National Telecommunicator Week. This year has been extraordinary, unlike any other in our history from a 911 perspective. Not only have we dealt with the three disasters that you're very familiar with, but in September, during the wildfires, the Clackamas 911 Center also had to evacuate while at the same time handling almost 50,000 911 calls over a two-week period. So from the time of Labor Day to the time of September 23rd, we actually evacuated formally on September 10th and split our operation between Lake Oswego Communications and our partners in Washington County. So we conducted 911 call-taking out of the Lake Oswego facility, and we conducted fire and law enforcement dispatching out of nine different positions over at the Washington County Consolidated Emergency Communication Agency. So it is the first time that evacuation of that size and scale has ever been conducted for a 911 center, and we were proud to say that we did not drop a single 911 call during that experience, even though there was a lot going on during those two weeks. So our staff have worked every single day. There has been, even through the pandemic, we have 45 dispatchers here at Clackamas County that have served tirelessly throughout the 283,000 calls that they've handled in this past year, and continue to serve on a regular basis. So if it pleasures the board, I would like to read a proclamation that honors the communicators here in Clackamas County.
Before you go, Cheryl, yes. I want to say your evacuation effort during the wildfires was nothing short but remarkable. You know, my hat is off to you. I can't imagine in my wildest dreams having to do what you did. I want to, my hat's off to you and your staff for your remarkable effort and continuing the enormous amount of calls that came in. I just think this is a fine example how government serves people very well. Yes, you may continue reading your proclamation.
Thank you. So we would like to read the proclamation that says proclaiming April 11th through 17th, 2021, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Clackamas County. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services within Clackamas County. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from residents who call Clackamas County 911. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our residents have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of Clackamas County provide lifesaving information, deliver babies, and provide CPR instruction to bystanders who may never have been trained. And whereas, each employee has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. And whereas, this past year provided significant challenges as 911 employees navigated response through a global pandemic, local wildfires that both threatened their homes personally, and caused 911 operations to evacuate to alternate locations and stayed on-site through a significant ice storm and power outages. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners declares April 11th through 17th, 2021, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Clackamas County, in honor of the first responders whose diligence and professionalism keeps our county and our residents safe. We encourage all residents to join us in celebrating the commitment and courage that 911 call-takers, dispatchers, and support staff exhibit daily in their service to the residents of Clackamas County dated this 15th day of April, 2021.
Excellent. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just recognize, Cheryl, that, you know, I think the resolution does that, but I think it's also worth noting from the county commissioners, the great work and the unique skill sets and the unique people that it takes to actually take those calls, deal with the stress and the trauma that others are experiencing, and then direct them and help them navigate to the services they need at that critical time. So just want to just say thank you, and also my appreciation to all of the employees, the 45 911 folks that do that on a daily basis. Thank you.
Absolutely, Paul. Any other comments? May I have a motion?
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion to move approval. The proclamation recognizing April 11th through 17th as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Work. Motion has been made by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Christina, would you call the poll, please?
Of course. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you. Quickly, Cheryl, thank you to you and your staff. And Commissioners, you've said it already, but our CCOM staff are world-class. During the wildfires, many of them themselves had to evacuate their homes, and they still showed up for work. During the ice storms, they slept in the office so they could be present to deliver services while their families were without power. Countless examples, incredible, incredible performance and public service. Thank you, Cheryl, very much. All right. Next, Commissioners, another presentation, declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clackamas County. Our presenters are Adam Freer and Chelsea Hamilton from Health, Housing, and Human Services, and I believe they are online.
They are?
Yep. All right. Go ahead, please, Adam and Chelsea.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners, Chair, and Administrator. It's a pleasure to be with you today. My name is Adam Freer. I'm the Director of the Children, Family, and Community Connections Division of H3S, and I'm here today with Chelsea Hamilton, who is the county's lead on parenting and related programs. So April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, so we wanted to take a brief moment of your time to draw your attention to the current state of the problem, including how it's been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, and recognize and celebrate the wonderful work that's being done to prevent child abuse and neglect.
Clackamas County, we honor Child Abuse Prevention Month each year by planting blue pinwheels, the national symbol for child abuse prevention, in the DSD Circle of Honor. This year, we planted 543 pinwheels, recognizing each of the substantiated cases of child abuse reported in our county last year. We also provided over 2,000 pinwheels to community partners, allowing them to plant their own pinwheels and host their own community events. We would like to share with you now a video capturing the planting event that took place on April 1st, 2021.
Are we supposed to have sound?
I'm wondering if the sound does.
I mean, I don't know if we are or not. I'm just asking.
It's supposed to be sound, yes.
Obviously.
All right. So we can't hear the sound, so can you stop the video, please, and continue your presentation?
See these pinwheel members go down every year. And I do thoroughly believe that community support, coming around families who are in stress, who are having hard times, can really help that.
Events like these are really important because it says that child abuse is preventable, and that is what we really want our community to understand, is that child abuse doesn't have to happen. We can prevent it. And Clackamas County, as a community, we work really hard to put a lot of effort into those prevention efforts.
Pinwheels represent the whimsy of childhood. You can see how they spin when the wind blows through them, and that sort of represents our ability as a community to actually make a difference in the lives of children in Clackamas County. Whether it's just a dental breeze, and we may not really know that we have made an impact, but we can see it when the pinwheel spins.
It's an easy issue, just in terms of who we are as a community, to get behind. We all want kids to thrive and be safe. We want families to be supported and stay together. The impact that experiencing abuse and neglect has as a child into adulthood and going forward through life, we all pay for that.
Through prevention, children do not become victims. But we need to act, because if we don't do anything, the abuse is going to continue.
There's been more demand on parents in this past year than any year prior. So it's more important, it feels like, to us than ever that we take this month to kind of raise awareness and say, here's the programs we have. Access them. Give us a call. Check our website. Reach out if you're needing help, because it doesn't matter who you are as a parent. Parenting is an important job, but it is a challenging job. Having someone there to kind of support and help and guide you is what we want to do for families. We want the Acknowledgement of Child Abuse Prevention Month to spread countywide. So encouraging anybody to plant their own pinwheel gardens, or to find a pinwheel garden and visit that, and kind of enjoy and celebrate with us all of those great prevention programs that we have in place.
Our efforts dedicated to preventing child abuse are more important now than ever, and we cannot do this work alone. We provide access to parenting classes, family support programs, resource navigation, home visiting, respite care, and child abuse prevention education, but we do this through strong partnerships with many of our community organizations who are highlighted here on this slide. One of our key partners in child abuse prevention is the Children's Center. They conduct child medical assessments for children who are suspected victims of abuse and neglect. We see that the largest reasons for child and family to be referred to their services were sexual abuse, physical abuse, and neglect, as highlighted on this slide.
So in order to effectively prevent child abuse neglect, we must understand the underlying causes and contributing factors. The latest statewide assessment identified these stress factors as the most commonly present in substantiated cases of abuse and neglect in the state. So it's substance abuse, the presence of domestic violence, law enforcement involvement, and challenges that children are facing. So the COVID pandemic has had profound impacts on all aspects of our lives, which naturally raises the question of how it has impacted child abuse and neglect. Unfortunately, it's still a little too early to determine the full impact, but we do know that the reports of cases has decreased. However, this doesn't necessarily indicate that incidents have decreased. In fact, many experts believe that there is more likely a significant increase based on several factors. It's clear that family stressors have increased dramatically during the pandemic shutdown. At the same time, critical social supports have decreased due to increased isolation. Also, children are often stuck at home with their abusers, increasing opportunities for abuse. Children also have less contact with those who typically report cases, such as teachers. All of these factors suggest an increase in abuse. As we look forward, as we look forward to prevention efforts, we want to draw attention to a few things. For those interested in learning more about how they can prevent abuse and neglect, we listed on this slide an important new guide from the federal government, the Prevention Resource Guide. We also thought it important to make sure everyone is aware that prevention is receiving increased emphasis in child welfare across the nation. This shift is reflected in the Family First Prevention Services Act of 2018 that asks each state to submit a five-year prevention plan. Oregon submitted theirs in February of this year. It's still under review, but will hopefully begin implementation soon. The Act encourages states to focus on strengthening specific key protective factors that are directly related to abuse and neglect, including some of those that we mentioned today, social connections, but also including quality childcare, stable employment at a livable wage, access to health insurance, and services that reduce stress. We want to thank the board for its past and continued support of these and other critical services and efforts to combat child abuse and neglect. Next slide, please.
We have several upcoming community events which continue to honor Child Abuse and Prevention Month, and we invite all of you, or anybody watching this slideshow at a later time, to join any of these events. This evening, we are working with the Children's Center on a parenting workshop, which will be delivered virtually in English and Spanish, discussing body safety for young children. And then on Saturday, we are partnering with Totas Santos to provide walk-up and drive-through pinwheel planting events at many local libraries. More information, including the Zoom links to join, can be found online at clackamisparenting.com. Thank you for your time today. We are happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, thank you. Great presentation. I was just going to ask for all the Commissioners if we can get a copy of the five-year state prevention plan. I know, I'd like to have a look at it. And secondly, I was very happy to see that childcare is mentioned as part of a seamless opportunity to prevent child abuse. Oftentimes, I think that we can't overlook that. We've heard about it from our Education Service District, from our superintendents. We've heard about that directly from our business community, and I can't stress how important it is, not only to work with children after trauma has occurred, but to put things in place like childcare, so perhaps you'll get an opportunity to do some initial prevention, or have it be another touch point where we can identify and notice that a child is being abused and hurt. So thank you for that. Thank you for the information, and we will continue to work for adequate childcare.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. So question, and I'm not sure if we have the answer, so we may, I may need to have folks come back to me with this, but at the beginning of the pandemic, we were recognizing, excuse me, that child abuse reports to the hotline were down, and that was mostly based on children not being in school, children not going to the doctor, but law enforcement interface with child abuse was up. And that was related to 2020. I'm just wondering when we'll have data for 2020, and my issue with that is if we need to be looking at this issue as part of our recovery efforts, it would be helpful to know how the pandemic affected with numbers, our child abuse.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, may I have?
Can they respond? Is anybody there to respond?
I think we'd be happy to bring back the figures that we have, that are available.
Okay. Adam, are there numbers available now? Because I noticed that the data in this presentation was from 2018, 2019.
Yeah, the data we presented was the latest that we have, but we can definitely inquire and see what data, if there is any data available.
Okay, perfect. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
I also noticed the data was FY '18, and I was hoping we had more accurate data, but that's the way data flows sometimes, I guess, right? Seeing no other comments from Commissioners, may I have a motion?
I move to approve recognizing April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Second.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Scholl and seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Christina, would you please call the poll?
Yes. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Staff for bringing that forward. Gary, what's up next?
Next chair is a public hearing, the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 10.03, Determination of Waste Management Fees. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, will present.
Thank you so much, Administrator Schmidt, Chair Smith, Samantha, and the rest of the board. My humble apologies. We are here today for the second reading of ordinance number 01-2021, amending Chapter 10.03, Determination of Waste Management Fees. I am joined by Evan Polk and Rick Winterhalter, who are online if there are more detailed questions that are coming forward from the board. And again, we were here for the first reading on April 1st, 2021, had a lengthy discussion there, and so we'll kind of hold with the presentation today and just be prepared to answer questions the board may have. I was remiss on April 1st for not thanking our Solid Waste Commission for convening an emergency meeting to kind of review this ordinance, and I'd like to do that now publicly to thank them for their service. They volunteer and assist in these solid waste matters, and we appreciate the efforts they provide and the service they provide to citizens of Clackamas County. So with that, we are here, happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding the second reading of the proposed ordinance amendment.
Do the commissioners have any clarifying questions regarding this? I will now open the public meeting for the testimony on this matter, and so far, I have three cards. Is there anybody else who would like to sign up to testify who is in the room who does not know to fill out a card? Okay. Christina, do we have anybody online who wants to testify on this matter?
We do. We have four people that have registered online.
Okay, we'll go with people in the room first. The first up, Shane Abma, and did I pronounce your name correctly?
Abma, very, very good.
Abma, sorry. Please come forward at the dais and state your name, your residence, and please continue.
Good morning, Chair Smith and county commissioners. My name is Shane Abma, and I'm the Metro attorney that advises the garbage and recycling division. My work address is 600 Northeast Avenue in Portland, Oregon, but I'm here to tell you that I'm also a very proud Clackamas County resident myself. I'm here today to clarify a few previous statements related to a recent lawsuit filed by Clackamas County residents against Metro regarding our garbage disposal rates. They allege that Metro is violating its charter, and that has led to this proposed ordinance. First, I want to be clear that Metro is not violating its charter. Metro has charged a single rate for garbage disposal for nearly 40 years, and long before we even had a charter. For that matter, it's my understanding that the county does the same at its own transfer station in Sandy. Neither of us distinguish between wet and dry waste disposal. But plaintiffs allege in this case that Metro provides distinct wet and dry waste disposal services. They argue that we should charge accordingly. We disagree that we provide distinct services. Second, despite what Mr. DiLorenzo, whose plaintiff's attorney, has implied in previous testimony, Metro has never stated that it cannot be sued or challenged over its rates. And by the way, I should do a little bit of an aside and say that I hope I don't stumble over Mr. DiLorenzo's name. We used to work together, so I'm used to calling him John, and he calls me Shane, but I'm trying to be a little bit more formal today. For example, a dry waste sorting facility would likely have standing to sue Metro, and Metro acknowledged this to the court. In fact, Mr. DiLorenzo has recently represented just such a dry waste sorting facility that has threatened to sue Metro over this very same legal issue for years. Also, residential garbage haulers would likely have standing. So Metro has never said that no one can challenge us on our rates. What Metro argued to the court in this case is only that these particular plaintiffs could not sue Metro because they lacked standing. Judge Norby agreed and dismissed the case with prejudice. And let me also say that Metro provided plaintiffs with over 6,000 pages of documents during this lawsuit, and that's in addition to over 10,000 pages of documents that plaintiffs subpoenaed from several local governments, including Clackamas County, and several third parties. Mr. DiLorenzo has said a few times that he can't even get to first base in this lawsuit. But the judge reviewed many of these documents before making her decision, so it's a little unfair to suggest that she ruled with no evidence in front of her. That is simply not the case. Finally, the ordinance before the board today doesn't add any authority that this board does not already have. You already have full discretion to reduce rates. Rather, this ordinance is designed for one reason only, and that is to help Mr. DiLorenzo keep suing Metro. You know, you opened the last meeting on this ordinance with a discussion about a dogbite lawsuit against the county. Chair Smith noted that it was a frivolous lawsuit, but it was still costing taxpayers thousands of dollars. Metro believes the same thing is happening here. We have already spent thousands of dollars to defend this lawsuit. We strongly believe we will prevail on this legal issue if we are sued again, but it's going to cost thousands more dollars to keep defending them, and that's unfortunate. Thank you for letting me testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Paul?
I do have a question. Good to see you again, former counselor, Abma.
Yes, it's a little different to be in front of you, testifying in this manner.
Yep. So getting to the issue of standing, can you tell me if a constituent has a concern about the rate? Where do they have standing?
If you're talking about Metro's disposal rate, or their own garbage, their residential garbage disposal?
Well, it seems, it seems that the rate that people pay, you know, my household, is somewhat originally derives from the tipping fee that Metro sets, I guess, right?
Yes, that's a component.
So if I wanted to challenge that as a resident, where do I have, where do I have standing? Because it seems as though if I understood this, and I could be misunderstanding it, you know, that's possible. I don't understand this fully. Can you tell me how I would have standing?
You don't, you wouldn't have standing. That's what the court ruled, because there's a two-step process. You don't pay Metro directly. It would be the same as, for example, a fuel component is also a component of the garbage rate, so is healthcare cost. That doesn't mean that a resident would sue a gas station for charging too much fuel as part of that component. So there's, it's a two-step process, and the court just found that this, these plaintiffs don't have standing. Of course, not everyone has the ability to sue anyone else. There has to be an injury, and you have to be able to redress that injury in court, and that a ruling by the court would solve your injury. And what the court found here is, was just simply too speculative, that even if Metro, even if plaintiffs won the lawsuit, and we were forced to charge wet waste disposal and dry waste disposal, there was no guarantee that their rates would go down. And in fact, as you've had testimony prior, Metro has reduced its rates twice in the last few years, and this county board did not reduce its own rates. So there was no guarantee. It was too speculative.
Right. I guess, but the part I'm still left with a loss, and it's compelling, and for me, you know, which is why we're here today, is that knowing the county just passes that cost through, right? So, you know, if, if, getting back to my example, if I want to have standing, I gotta, I would then sue the county, when in turn, knowing that it's the county that really doesn't set the rate, or just passing it through, it seems to me there, there ought to be some element of standing. That's just opinion, not asking you to respond, but I think that's why we're here today. I think that for, on behalf of our constituents, I guess, that's the part I think that someone should have standing somewhere. And I don't know, again, what the judge reviewed, or the technicalities. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge, neither of those, but it just seems from the perception and the actual situation that, that no matter what service we have, no matter what we pay as citizens, whether it's private, public, whatever, that if we feel we've been wronged, we should have an opportunity to be able to challenge or have standing somewhere.
I can appreciate that there's a gut instinct that people should have their day in court. I get that. But we have laws that require certain things to prove, and in this case, the court found that the evidence wasn't there for them to have standing.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah. So the context of standing is, is more, is it, so if I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding. So is the standing issue that was ruled on that in this particular case, they have no standing, or that in general, the public has no standing?
No, in this particular case. And also, I mean, I don't, I don't want to spend too much of your time here today with the legal nuances, but this was a declaratory judgment action against the government, and in that case, there's a heightened level of standing. So this is not even the same kind of standing that you would have in a general case. This is a very specific kind of lawsuit for what plaintiffs were seeking. They were seeking a declaration by the court for something, and what the court ruled is, even if I find in your favor, I'm not sure that that means that you're going to see any lower rates in your garbage bills, and therefore you don't have standing under the Declaratory Judgment Act. So it's, it's very specific to this type of lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Abma.
Abma.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
You betcha. And please remain here today. Next up is Les Poole.
He didn't hear you.
Les Poole. Please state your name and your residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. I spoke previously about the issue, so I'll be very brief here. There's a feeling, from what I'm hearing and from what I just heard, that we're now in a courtroom. I'm not suggesting we are, but the implication is there, and that you're asked to make legal decisions. I would reflect to you that regardless of whether or not any individual, or regardless of whether or not a court ruled that the plaintiff had no standing, that doesn't address the merits of the issue. In other words, the issue before us, if I understand it correctly, is if the county changes, makes some legal changes to its documents or ordinance, it would allow us to have standing should the lawsuit prevail. And my concern here is that with all of this legal cost, all of what we're hearing, we're seeing an incredible lack of efficiency, frankly, by Metro. Metro's resistance to this is troubling. It truly is. When it comes to equity and fairness, I believe that those words are bannered about, and they have such gray meanings anymore. The equity and fairness that we seek is that as ratepayers, whether it's Metro or wherever, as ratepayers, we want the best possible value, we want equity across the board, and currently, there's an issue here that the county can benefit from if they approve the action before us. So again, I want to reiterate that I don't believe you're being asked to be attorneys here, nor should you be, and that becoming too preoccupied with whether or not someone had standing in a lawsuit, for example, does not change the merits of the case. If I wanted to sue the county, but I didn't live here and didn't have standing, and I wanted to sue, let's say Marion County for some action they took, my case might be tossed out, but does that mean the issue that I brought before the court doesn't have merit? So I support the county staying on course and the direction that we, I think we're heading, we're heading and hopefully are heading in this issue. Let's approve this and move forward. And again, there isn't enough time to discuss the merits of why Metro should cooperate with us, and there should be a, we shouldn't even be here. We should not even be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Up next, John DiLorenzo.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is John DiLorenzo. I'm a partner at Davis Wright Tremaine, and I represent the ratepayers who were involved in this standing case. I agree with Mr. Abma that we are friends and have worked together, but Mr. Abma and I disagree about whether Metro is violating its charter. Now, that's not exactly front-page news, lawyers disagree with one another. But the point is, that disagreement is something that should be made, that should be resolved by a court on the merits. Unfortunately, ratepayers in this county are unable to get a court to get to the merits, because the court has found that they have no standing to question whether Metro's tip fee violates its charter. Now, Metro has an ordinance, its resolution, I'm sorry, it's Resolution Number 16-4716 that it adopted in 2016, that acknowledges that wet waste and dry waste recovery are discreet public services. So why would a sorting facility sue? Well, a sorting facility might sue because Metro charging less than its cost is predatory behavior, designed to put private sorting facilities out of business. Can private facilities do much about that? No, because Metro, as a government entity, is exempt from the antitrust laws that normally prevent other businesses from defending against predatory behavior. How about a hauler? Mr. Abma says, well, a hauler can sue. Why in the world would a hauler sue? A hauler has no incentive to sue over the rates, because a hauler passes the rates through. It's a revenue-neutral event to the hauler. The only people who really have an incentive to sue Metro over this are the people who ultimately pay in the end, and that's the residents, your residents, who are ratepayers. The 6,000 pages of discovery make us resolute in our belief that Metro is violating its charter. Judge Nordby's decision, however, was limited to standing only, and it's true, it was in this case. But this case would be like any other case in which ratepayers try to sue Metro. Your ordinance will give ratepayers, your residents, standing to question whether the tipping fees violate the charter. You have the power to make that happen as a policy matter, and I submit that is good policy. So I hope that you vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiLorenzo. Christina, we have some people on Zoom or the phone?
On Zoom. I have three people on Zoom, and I will call them in the order that I received their registration. So it looks like Andy Shaw is going to be the first person. Excuse me. Let's see. So Andy, I'm not sure if you're using an older version. I can't allow you to talk, unfortunately.
Can we, can he get a different version, and we'll come back to him?
Yeah, or else, Andy, if you'd like to call in by phone, we might be able to assist you with that.
Does he have the phone number?
It's all online, so it's where they've registered.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So Andy will come back to you. We'll go next to Eric Fruits. Eric, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have, please introduce yourself in your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I am Eric Fruits. I'm Vice President of Research for Cascade Policy Institute. We are a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) nonprofit research and education organization. We do not solicit or accept money or funding from any government or public agency. The proposed ordinance before you today would amend Chapter 10.03 of the county code. The concept is simple. If Metro reduces its tip fee, Clackamas County residents get the benefit of that reduction in the form of reduced garbage rates. That's it. As my kids would say, easy peasy, lemon squeezy. It's a simple concept. If the costs go down, consumers, your voters, get the benefit of the cost reduction. It is such a simple concept that it's surprising it's not already part of the county code. Opponents of this ordinance may not be able to imagine a world where cost savings are passed down to consumers, but we see this every day. As costs have gone down over time, we've seen consumers reap the benefits of lower prices. Today, we pay less for airline tickets, computers, TVs, long-distance telephone, home delivery, even solar panels. The list goes on. Put simply, consumers, your voters, expect and deserve Put simply, consumers, your voters, expect and deserve to experience the benefits of lower costs. This ordinance is the right thing to do. A vote yes codifies a promise that consumers will see the benefit of a court-ordered rate reduction. A vote no raises a giant middle finger to your voters, effectively telling them that no matter what happens, they will always see their garbage rates rise over time, even if a court orders otherwise. Politically, this ordinance should be a no-brainer. If you pass this ordinance and Metro reduces its tip fees, you can take credit for the lower garbage rates. That would make a great mail-in when you're running for reelection. I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but so far, I have not seen a single resident testify to this commission to ask for higher garbage rates. Commissioners, this is your chance to shine. Approve this ordinance and bring your residents the hope of lower garbage rates. It's easy-peasy, lemon-squeezy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fruits. Christina?
We have Richard Burke next. Richard, go ahead and unmute yourself, and state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Richard Burke. I work in Tigard in Washington County. I live in Silverton. Today, I'm representing the Libertarian Party of Oregon Political Action Committee. By way of background, I am a former 19-year commissioner and former president of the Tuauton Valley Water District, and am the former chair of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. I'm not being paid for this testimony. I'm involved because myself and the Libertarian Party of Oregon PAC thinks that this is very important. Now, first, I would like to talk about accountability. Tuauton Valley Water District, where I used to serve as a commissioner, was directly responsible to its voters. If we had overcharged, we would have been subject to being sued if we did not correct the problem ourselves. A private company like PGE, if it overcharges, it is sued. The only reason why Metro, and I believe its attorney, is saying that it cannot be sued is simply because it is a layer between the people, and that you are a layer between the people and Metro itself. This is the kind of thing that cheeses people off. This is the kind of thing that undermines legitimacy in government. When they feel that a governmental entity cannot be touched because in this case, they are basically existing behind the layer of another governmental entity, in this case, namely you. As commissioners, I would think it is simply good politics so you can tell your voters that you empowered them. You made Metro accountable to the voters directly in this situation. Likewise, it would be bad politics to be able, to have people be able to say of you that you prevented voters from being able to hold Metro accountable. And if Metro can avoid direct accountability to the voters, what other governments can? This is the kind of thing that erodes government, confidence in government. You know, as a libertarian, I support small government. But people must have confidence in the governments that we need to exist. Legitimacy is important, and already eroded in this current time. Problems like this chip away at the legitimacy of governments, and it's just bad policy. As somebody who lives, or excuse me, works in Washington County, which is, you know, outside of your jurisdiction, I'll remind each of you that Metro covers a lot more than Clackamas County. It covers Washington County, Multnomah County, and, you know, it serves a lot of people. It is important to signal to Metro that they will be held accountable. If they are not held accountable, if they cannot directly be held accountable to the people, then it might tempt them to care less about whether or not they do the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
The services they provided in other counties.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
I'm out of time.
Sorry, that was...
Does, did Andy Shaw come back?
It doesn't look like it, and I'm still unable to allow him to speak.
Well, Andy, you could submit testimony by email. I'm sorry we weren't able to make the connection today. Any other testimony?
That is it.
Well, I'd just like to state for the record, this board is unable to determine if Metro indeed is overcharging or not. That's not our purview. It's the court's purview to do that. But without our decision today, the court will not be able to determine that. And without this change, we are allowing Metro to overcharge, and there seems to be some evidence that they are overcharging. Also, does the public realize that Metro has used their tax dollars to pay for attorneys to tell a judge that it's none of your business if you don't get the services you're paying for? And I don't like that out of any type of government. I certainly wouldn't tolerate it out of Clackamas County government. Why would I tolerate it from the largest metro regional government we have? As I said in our previous hearing, it's not Metro's money, it's not the county's money, it's the rate payer's money. And with that in mind, I will entertain a motion.
You'll want to close the public hearing, Chair.
I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Shaw?
I move, we approve an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 10.03, Solid Waste and Waste Management, and declaring an emergency.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Paul. Paul, do you have a comment?
I do. I just want to just say that as I see this, you know, there's a clear distinction between standing and merit. And the judge didn't rule on merit, he ruled on really the standing. So it seems to me that at a future date, when we pass this, they'll be, the courts can figure out if there's merit to the case and rule accordingly. So we're just allowing someone to have standing in this matter. So that's, I think that's a compelling argument, and I'm willing to support that today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. So I don't have a problem with Metro being required to justify their rates. I did go on a very interesting journey, however, and I would like to just share it with my Commissioners, if that's all right. I had asked a question last, or was it last week? I can't remember when we last heard this. When this was up before us, to try to figure out, well, maybe it would be okay if there were different rates to be charged from wet waste to dry waste if there was a legitimate business purpose for dry waste to be subsidized because it's an industry need, or it would be detrimental to our construction industry to have to pay that full cost, and it just makes more sense to have it equitable. But I put that question out there. I didn't get any response, and so I don't have any basis to opine that. And as Chair Smith and Commissioner Savas have said, that would be for the purview of the courts to see what the injury would be, or if it's equitable, or if it's not equitable. But the one thing that I learned, which I thought was fascinating, so I'm just going to share this, there is, there is not a distinct, as we've heard, it is not distinguishable between wet waste and dry waste, it's the same fee. And remarkably, 90%, 90% of the loads that go to Metro are for dry waste, 10% of the loads are for wet waste. But remarkably enough, the tonnage is very similar, and the fees are distributed very much in accordance with the tons. So there is 9.3 million collected for dry waste, 8 million collected for wet waste, and there's a 14% differential in how much tonnage, and that is evidenced within the fees. So I just wanted to share that with my Commissioners. This has been amazing opportunity. Evan has become a little bit my best friend this week, helping me understand these issues. And these are important for us as Commissioners to understand, how this works, what goes into a rate, what are all the factors, how does this work intergovernmentally between the person that puts their garbage out onto the street, to the person that drops off their load at the transfer station? How does this all work? And I have been appreciated this conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. You bring up issues that I think we would like answers to. I would agree with you on that. Commissioner Savas?
Just a little bit of humor. I just want to just say that I hope this is not a waste of time.
Maybe it will be. You never know. Any other comments? Christina, please call the poll.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? You're on mute, Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you all for coming up and testifying today. Gary, what's next?
Next, Chair Smith, is the consent agenda. I'll ask Christina to read the consent agenda by title only, please.
All right. Starting our consent agenda is the Department of Transportation and Development. It's approval of a contract with the Oregon Department of Transportation, Transportation Safety Division for the purposes of ODOT-TSD Safe Communities Grant Renewal. The contract maximum of $54,550, and a grant match requirement is 40%, and will be met by staff time. For public and government affairs, approval of a board order for transfer control of a parent company of Wave Division, Radiant Holdings, Franchises and Sandy, and Cambe/Malala, no funds are involved. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under disaster management, approval to apply for a state homeland security grant fiscal year '21 funding. Application guarantees $139,712.12 in competitive grants up to $652,807.88. No general funds are involved. Under the juvenile department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University for reclaiming future licenses. There is $180,000 license cost, with $140,000 from Clackamas County Juvenile Department currently budgeted, and $40,000 of a one-time external grant match to be paid with grant funds to Portland State University. This will include general funds. Under business and community services, joint permit application for Oregon Department Fish and Wildlife Eagle Fern Wear Removal Project. County parks will pay $960 towards the wear removal project. All remaining project costs of the $129,000 project are being paid for by other parties. This is not general funds. Number two, a memorandum of understanding between Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and Clackamas County for the Eagle Fern Wear Removal Project. County parks will pay $960 towards the wear removal project. All remaining project costs of $129,000 are being paid for by other parties. This is not general funds. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Christina. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval. Commissioner Shaw has seconded the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Consent agenda passes 5-0. The board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the development agency for the next consent agenda.
Christina, would you please read the development agency consent agenda by title only?
Yes, there's one item. It's approval of a contract with Harper-Hoof-Petersen Regellis Incorporated for construction management services for the D Street Road Improvement Project. The contract amount is $354,800, funded through the North Clackamas Revitalization Area Urban Renewal District. No general funds are involved. That's your consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove an item from here? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved approval for the consent agenda item, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded. Any further comment on that? Seeing none, Christina, please call the poll.
Of course. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
The motion is approved by 5-0. The board will adjourn as a development agency and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them in the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take the in-person cards first. Yvonne Lazarus, please come forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Yvonne Lazarus, and I live in Milwaukee. I'm here today to request that, well, I want to know why it's difficult to find information on your website, especially for advisory groups.
For what? Excuse me?
Pardon? Advisory group.
Oh, the ABCs, the advisory boards and commissions?
Yeah.
Okay. Give her a few more minutes.
I came up here to get a flash drive last Wednesday, and I asked for the Emergency Equity Diversity and Inclusion Council, January 1921, and she couldn't find it. She couldn't find it because part of it was my fault. It wasn't under a committee meeting. It was under a, just a minute here, I'm sorry. A council. It was under council. And I looked and looked and looked. I found it one time, it was gone. I looked again, and she still didn't find it. I called in yesterday and requested it. And she did tell me that there were a lot of meetings and things, but I would like to have that on a flash drive, please. That meeting, I want to see it. I do want to say that last Wednesday was really a hard day for me because I locked myself out of my car. But I want to say something about one of your girls at the information desk. Her name is Mason, and she is a jewel. She's a real jewel. That young lady brought me out water. That young lady, when she left, brought me out a little sticky note with people that I could call, because they sent me somebody from Vancouver that didn't know what he was doing, and I was out there a long time. Now, I wanted to say that, because when I do come up here, it seems like I'm always angry about everything, and it was pleasing. I know her parents have got to be proud of her. And that I want to say, you know, I hope I can get my flash drive, please.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes. Thank you for that, Yvonne. Gary, can you address this?
Yes, if you're willing to stay after this meeting, our Board of County Commissioners staff will help you today.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you pointed out the difficulty in maneuvering our website to find the information.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
The building locked down, and I didn't know it locked down. Is that from the governor?
Gary?
At 2:00. I couldn't get back in.
Yeah.
Are these, this building, the Public Services Building and Development Services Building are open from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then for the public? So we do have that. So we do have that.
Till three. It locked at two.
That should not have happened, so I'll confirm with our staff. But it's nine a.m. to three p.m. for the public for these two buildings right now.
Thank you, Yvonne. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I really appreciate Ms. Lazarus coming and bringing up the importance of us being transparent. We have this right here, which is our goals, and part of it is by 2024 county policies and decisions, service delivery and board deliberations will be equitable, inclusive, and transparent. And a big part of that is our advisory groups that advise this group, the Board of County Commissioners, and our departments. That information needs to be accessible, and I know that, I've talked with Administrator Schmidt about that because you are not the first to bring this issue up when people are trying to maneuver to figure out where, when can they go and observe an advisory committee? What are the minutes of the advisory? Who's on the advisory committee? So I am very confident, because Gary Schmidt and I have talked about this, that that is in the process of being repaired as part of this board's priority and, of course, our executive staff as well. So I don't know if you want to talk about where that is in process, Gary?
In process.
Yes. Okay?
That's my answer.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next for public communication is Les Poole.
Hello again. Here's a public service announcement for you. Today's April fifteenth, and the good news is.
Les, please state your name, thank you, and I'll allow you a few more seconds.
Les Poole, Clackamas County, of course. I live in Gladstone. I was thinking of the fifteenth of April being tax day, and the deadline for filing has been extended. And the reason I share that is that it's not about anything except it's a snapshot of where we're at. Everything has been delayed, 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 and I'm not here to complain about that. I'm saying that the fact that the census isn't completed and that we have situations where there's a lot of grayness out there, and the flip side of that, of course, is we're all anxious, the sun is shining. We've gone through a shutdown. We've been through disasters that we're still addressing. And I'm just hopeful that as time goes on, we can stay on track. We can make progress against the issues and not become too preoccupied with the personal vendettas and partisan politics. I do want to mention that I, many of you have probably read the op-ed that I submitted. It's in the Clackamas Review with my concerns about Commissioner Fisher's performance. I'll call it that. And it is not my intention to have a big dialogue back and forth or to be a partisan or to be unreasonable. And anyone that reads anything that I've written in my letters is welcome to question or challenge it. I do not submit letters by committee. Every word I write, I'm responsible for. It's carefully crafted. And I'm coming from a place as a concerned citizen rather than someone who's preoccupied with a vendetta. So I wanted to make that very clear. The last thing I wanted to mention is it's very unfortunate that there's rioting occurring, sadly predictable rioting occurring in this country, and that the violence and the damage done in Portland alone to our reputation and to our businesses is just hard to even account. And I've mentioned before, and I would hope that the commission and the county in general would make a statement about how we're going to promote public safety here. We're in Clackamas County. We're right next door to a hotspot. We're in troubling times, and if rioting or violence continues and spreads to this county, we need to be in front of it. So that's a really, really troubling situation, and I would hope that we would see more action and more outreach from the county on it. Once again, I accidentally got done in three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. So Les, I did read your "In My Opinion" piece, and I do want to put on the record that there are not personal vendettas that I've been accused of. This entire board vote to censure Commissioner Scholl, and that was done. That is what's passed. If you have questions, don't come to this body to ask questions about the recall effort for Mark Scholl. You can go to the recall effort for Mark Scholl, which is a group of private citizens. I really want to encourage folks out there that this board is looking to work on very important issues. Our Performance Clackamas Plan is full of priorities that we need to be focusing on, and we do not, the distraction from those in the community trying to paint the politics of a potential future recall is not constructive to our efforts to work as a team together. And Chair Smith has been a champion of this perspective, and I think we should honor our process and stop bringing this up.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Christina, would you like to moderate the public communication on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair Smith. We have four public speakers, and I will call them in the list that I received them in. So we're going to start with Bill Ware. Bill, go ahead and unmute yourself, give your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. At the last commission business meeting, you had a number of people testify. Among them were several Chamber of Commerce representatives concerned about the upcoming shutdown and the devastating effect on county business and employees. There were others who expressed concern about the administration of and lack of information on the COVID vaccine and omission of information on alternative medicine. A truly important and sobering meeting. These people took time from their lives to come down here. They did it to serve their community and to send a message. They were greeted by only two commissioners in person, two commissioners phoning it in from their homes, and the chair phoning from the road having planned time off. The media had a photo of it above an article about this meeting showing the near-empty seating on commission. Now, others have mentioned this before, including the chair, about commissioners continuing just phoning it in. It looks uncaring and unprofessional, particularly with a ubiquitous barking dog in the background. These optics to the general public undercut the seriousness required of the meeting. At the end of the meeting, commissioners gave their comments. Commissioner Fisher gave what could only be described as an elated, giddy, and animated announcement about her going to Salem to testify about spending more taxpayer money to build a new courthouse. Commissioner Schrader followed, focused on the same theme. Both missed an opportunity to show they understood what was going on that night. Many of us are worried about the shutdown and the ability to cope facing no solution in sight. Commissioner Savis, a longtime advocate for small business, and Commissioner Scholl recognized the seriousness of the evening and responded to what was told that evening to the commission. And to Chair Smith, I hope in your commissioner comments today that you repeat what you said at Tuesday's policy meeting about your letter and experience with the governor's office. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We will move on. Looks like next up is going to be Chris Waller. Chris, I will go ahead and bring you in. Go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. I would like to address some comments made by Chair Tudy Smith in this Tuesday's policy meeting, where she talked about a call that she had with Multnomah County Chair Deborah Caffery, Washington County Chair Catherine Harrington, and State of Oregon Jobs and Economy Advisor Leah Horner. Tudy stated, and these are her exact words, no misrepresentation here. This is all on tape. I also asked, and they're concerned about the new strain of virus. I says, well, supposedly our vaccination is supposed to cure that. Well, it might not. I says, well, what do you mean it might not cure that? What good is the vaccination? I was told that the vaccination would work on the next strain. So you're admitting to me then that the vaccination does no good? Let's break this down. Point number one, I also asked, and they're concerned about the new strain of virus. There is not one new strain. There are currently five variants of concern in the U.S. And unless we can reduce community spread, there will be more. That's how viruses work. They mutate, and mutations that confer an advantage to the virus will spread. The only way to stop this is to reduce viral transmission, and vaccination is the best way to do that. Point number two, I says, well, supposedly our vaccination is supposed to cure that. Vaccines don't cure viral infections. Vaccines help prevent viral infections. Point number three, what good is the vaccination? I was told that the vaccination would work on the next strain. So you're admitting to me then that the vaccination does no good? The height of irresponsibility in a pandemic is for a public official to state what good is the vaccination. Here we are desperately trying to convince people to get vaccinated so we can reach social immunity and end this pandemic, and Tudy claims that vaccines don't work? Tudy's comments show an abysmal ignorance of viral variants and how vaccines work. Actual public health experts tell us current vaccines do work well at protecting against the current variants, and boosters to increase efficiency are in the works. But the point here is that a responsible public official would be out at every opportunity encouraging vaccination, not fanning the flames of anti-vaxxer hysteria that are currently the biggest impediment against actually bringing this pandemic to an end. If we don't stop rampant community spread, variants may emerge that can elude our current vaccines. Tudy, you claim you want an end to COVID restrictions. So do we. And the best way to get there is to get shots into arms. Please work with your other commissioners and do what's right for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We will go ahead and move on. Looks like the next person is Michael Weber. Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Michael Weber, Oak Grove. Last Thursday evening, the commission considered three different versions of a letter to Governor Brown regarding COVID restrictions. The draft the board approved, while I do not agree with all of the conclusions, was professional and measured, gave understandable examples, avoided any partisan language, and invited collaboration. The version edited with red text by Chair Tudy Smith was, in my opinion, an incoherent, uninformed, and very partisan rant. Chair Smith stated that the pandemic is beginning to wind down. No, it isn't. Due primarily to actions of people who failed to follow guidelines for social distancing, we all know that the case rate in our county and state is going back up again, following almost the same curve that went to the peaks we saw in December. Just today, we were shown that the rate increased from under one hundred per a thousand, a hundred thousand, to north of a hundred and seventy per in a few weeks. Chair Smith stated Florida has also been a business success while they operate restaurants, bars, and gyms at capacity. In reality, Florida's case rate and death rate per one hundred thousand people are currently almost three times that of Oregon's. Chair Smith said, let's work together to combat disease through accepted science, innovation, and proven technologies currently being used throughout America. Let us be clear. HEPA filters, UV lighting, and extra vitamins aren't accepted science or proven technology. What are accepted science and proven technology? Wear your mask, social distance, and get vaccinated. Chair Smith has gone against these proven methods over and over again, as she has been told numerous times by numerous real public health experts. And now, because the board was wise enough not to approve sending the rant to the governor, Chair Smith has said that she will send it herself. That is her right, as long as she does as a private citizen and not as a representative of this county commission. Those ramblings do not reflect my views as a Clackamas County resident, nor do I think they represent the views of the majority of our fair citizens. They certainly do not reflect the views of this very commission, who voted five to zero, herself included, to send the draft carefully crafted by council members Fisher and Savis, and reject the version edited by Chair Smith. On a completely different topic and very briefly, as Commissioner Fisher said, the recall Mark Scholl effort is being undertaken by a private group of citizens. You can get more information at recallmarkscholl.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We will go ahead and move on to our last caller. That's going to be Christine Kennedy. Christine, go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. This is Christine Kennedy. I'm a resident of Clackamas County, and I've been a resident for about seven years. I live in Lake Oswego. I'm also, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh. I'm also retired as a registered nurse. I worked for forty-five years as a registered nurse in acute care facilities. My last position was five years in a large university setting, and I was the nurse administrator for all of the inpatient medicine units. Like several speakers, I was quite concerned to hear Ms. Smith on Tuesday talk about the vaccine as a cure. And perhaps that was a misspoken moment, but the reality is, is that it's misinformation, and now I think it's really incumbent to double down and encourage people to get the vaccination. I'm really, really proud of Clackamas County. Thirty-four percent in terms of our vaccination rate is terrific. Now, as several people have mentioned, we're not, we're not at the end of the road. We're not seeing an improvement. We're going back up again. We know what we need to do. People are smart. Please, 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 let's follow the science. Transmission of the virus equals mutation and new variants. That's essentially why we need to keep the rate low. As you know, our case rate for Oregon has been low. That is not an indication that we need to totally open up now. It just means that everybody has been doing a great job of setting expectations, using the proper equipment, masking, distancing. It's not easy. So I just want to be sure that everybody is clear that the vaccines are protective. They're protective at this point in time, as much as we know with the variants. We learn every single day. And I think the term political malpractice has been raised in some situations. Certainly as a country, we've seen variations from state to state to state. And again, because our low, our cases and our deaths are low, that really is a testament to all Oregonians and to our leaders. Let's keep it low. Let's get through this. We're at the end. It's like you're going through a complicated treatment with medication and all kinds of treatments. You don't give up in the last part of it. You have to finish this off. So I just want, Tudy, Chair Smith, truly, I would like to have you please reconsider your position and your position to the governor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And that is the end of it.
Okay. I will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and let's move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is county administrator update. First, Commissioners, under the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration 2020-14, I signed two contracts on your behalf. I'm seeking your ratification of those contracts. They were for disaster management. I signed them on April thirteenth, 2021. They are both a memorandum of agreement. The first is between Clackamas County and Cambie Four Square Church. The second is between Clackamas County and Estacada Community Center. Both are for facility use for COVID-19 vaccinations and drive-through clinics. There's no cost to the county other than we will restore the facilities to their preconditioned use. If there are costs, they will be covered by CARES Act funding. No general funds are involved. These agreements will last until terminated by either party. So again, I signed these on April thirteenth. On your behalf, I'm seeking your ratification of those actions.
Move to ratify?
Commissioner Savis has been moved to ratify this motion. Commissioner Fisher has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Christina, please call the poll. Christina, please call the poll.
All right. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. Gary, what's up?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to share one piece of good news that our community and our employees and our organization does for the community. Last week during the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce's State of the Cities Forum, Gladstone Mayor Tammy Stempel recognized Clackamas Water Environment Services and called them an awesome partner for their ongoing collaboration with, in particular, the Inflow and Infiltration Project with Gladstone's water collection system. Inflow and infiltration, or otherwise known as I and I, refers to rainwater or groundwater that seeps into cracked sewer pipes. This water adds to the flow into wastewater treatment facilities, which causes costly damage. Water Environment Services has supported proposals by Gladstone and the City of Oregon City to reduce I and I in their city-maintained sewer systems, which delivers wastewater to the Water Environment Services Tri-City Facility. Reducing I and I is one of Water Environment Services' highest priorities and yours as the Board of Directors for Water Environment Services. Thank you to you, Commissioners, our Water Environment Services staff, and our partners in Gladstone and Oregon City for this effort, in particular, our employee in Water Environment Services, Jessica Rinner, who is our lead on the I and I work. That is the update. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary Schmidt. Now we are at Commissioner Communication. Up first is Commissioner Schrader.
Well, thank you, Chair Smith. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a quick report. I am not at, I'm virtually doing the meeting today because I had a very early meeting this morning with Clackamas Workforce Partnership and the meeting did not end until 9:45. So since I can't get to the office in 15 minutes, I decided that I would do this virtually today. But I am attempting to come in regularly, as you know. One of the things we talked about today in workforce is characteristics of a quality job. What is characteristics of a quality employer that offers a quality job? And what is the characteristics of a quality employee? And we're going to be moving through answering some of those questions as we work with our business community in order to make sure that they are getting the pipeline of workforce they need. And to that end, I also testified on behalf of Senate Bill 623. That is our workforce bill and that has been sponsored by Senator Lou Frederick and Representative Jeff Riordan. And the purpose is to give our local workforce boards the opportunity to give direct and pointed feedback to the state agencies to make sure that, number one, they're getting what they need, and number two, that they listen to the local level when we are dispersing those kinds of dollars. And that's a little bit of shift. So it's not becoming, it's becoming less top-down. And our, our action is to have it more bottom-up. It seems to be moving forward and so I'm hopeful that it will continue in the legislative process. And as I mentioned earlier, tomorrow is our Regional Solutions Meeting. We'll be reviewing the 10-point plan. I hope you have copies of that so you can possibly please give me feedback. I'd like to mention three of these. One is supporting resilient rural communities. And under that rubric, it's local governments and planning and growth and economic development strategies, targeted forest health strategies, I was pleased to see that, investment in community colleges and supporting our agricultural economy. It also has an action dealing with workforce development, upskill, re-skill opportunities to move individuals out of poverty, help women get back into the workforce, lean on strategies to address the talent pipeline, and that is largely STEM education is part of that, and amplify new voices to support workforce development. And I think the real big one that cuts, cuts across essentially urban and rural boundaries is, well, actually, two things. One is getting small businesses back on its feet, business relief, strategies related to Main Streets and downtown revitalization, providing ongoing technical assistance and outreach and development for businesses on the cusp of closing. I think that's the most important thing. I think that's where we are now. That's why I worked with the local Chamber of Commerce, North Clackamas Chamber, and staff and folks to, and with Commissioner Savis, to help craft that letter we sent to the Governor. And thank you all for supporting that. We, we did want to be measured and direct, but we had to get the point across that the harm that these, this continued seesawing is doing to our Main Street businesses. And finally, one of the big issues is investing in Oregon's infrastructure, including broadband, water, roads, wastewater, stormwater, and local government services for resiliency. And that would be related to wildfires. So those are the kinds of topics I'll be talking about tomorrow with our meeting. And again, please give me feedback so I can adequately represent, okay, adequately represent the views of our commission and our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Up next, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes. Good morning, Clackamas County, and thank you to everyone who took time today to testify. I think the people of Clackamas County are happy that we adopted the change to the code this morning regarding Metro. The people of this county want Metro held accountable, just as they want to see all levels of government accountable and responsible to the well of the people. On the issue regarding our letter to the Governor regarding change in COVID risk level, unfortunately, the Governor did not take the action we hoped to see her take. Like Commissioner Schrader said, we're very concerned about the, the economic ability of the people in this county to conduct their businesses and compete against other states that are wide open. And I encourage the people to continue to be careful, take the vaccine if you want, and continue to push back against any future restrictions on the economy of this county. On the bills before the legislature, Wednesday was a drop-dead date on bills that did not make it out of their chamber of origin. And I recommend every citizen in the county, take a look at the Secretary of State website that lists the surviving bills. Pick six that you want to support and pick six that you want to see defeated. Contact your state rep and your state senator and let them know how you feel. Your voice will make a difference. Also, there are many bills about the Second Amendment. Remember, that amendment exists to protect the people from a tyrannical government should it ever occur. It preserves freedom, our Constitution, and our republic. Speak up. On the border, 4,000 illegal entries are happening every day. Think about how this will affect our ability in the county to deal with homelessness, poverty, sex trafficking, crime, drugs, and exploitation of labor. The Border Patrol has even arrested people on the terrorist watch list in the last few weeks. What happens at the border affects Clackamas County. Call your congressman and senator in Washington, Washington DC and speak up. On the fair and rodeo, last evening, we had the Fair Board meeting. The Fair Board has set one June as a go-no-go date for committing to putting on the fair and rodeo. We need this event for our county. Unfortunately, yesterday, the City of Sisters canceled their rodeo for the summer and I pray that that does not happen in Clackamas County. Finally, on transportation, housing, and homelessness, we have huge issues to solve. Time is not on our side. Delays magnify the problem. And a thought for today, as we ponder solutions, it is not because things are difficult that we not dare. It is because we do not dare that things are difficult. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Savis, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to go back to, or not go back, but just mention the work we did on Wednesday morning on our transportation funding discussion. And I just want to just give my gratitude to staff and my colleagues for really a great work session. I think we did some good work. I think we made our position clear and that helps me, again, number one, reinforce the county's position at our tables, at the regional tables, and also gives me some confidence to speak really what I believe is the values that are important to Clackamas County and represent you all. This morning at J-PAC, Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, there was a presentation on a congestion pricing study for local roads. And I'm going to digress here a little bit, but just going back to the business discussion and our, in our letter last week and the impacts and the movement from moderate to high risk, a lot of my friends that, during my course of business life that I know, and others as well, in my capacity as a Commissioner, reached out and had a lot of conversations really in the last several days. And while some are on the brink, some are also saying, should I really stay here? You know, is, is this Portland Metro region or the state of Oregon the place to be? And, you know, what do you think, Paul? And so I, you know, I, I shared my individual thoughts and I, and I think this morning, I tried to make the point this morning when Metro made their, their presentation about the impacts of congestion pricing and pricing people going in and out. And I shared my, my, one of the obstacles I experienced in business, and that was trying to get my, my employees to incentivize them, number one, to come to work for me, number one, stay, stay to work for me, and also be able to get there. And my business is on McLaughlin Boulevard on a transit corridor. And, you know, I encouraged some of those folks who lived in Portland to take transit and, or whatever it took to get to work if they didn't have, if they didn't have a car or vehicle. And, you know, with this congestion pricing, it's really going to start basically a fee every day to go back and forth to work if, where you live, and those impacts are differently. But, but as I read the material, and I'm going to be studying it a little bit more what I saw this morning here with the, with the heat maps that they presented, there could be substantial impacts to businesses and employees trying to move, going back and forth to work. And so how do we get here? How do we get in this conversation about congestion pricing and, you know, and, which is really a form of tolling? And I just want to just kind of restate something I stated at the last tolling meeting in 2018 because this committee was formed in 2017 after the legislature enacted the bill. And our work started in 2017 and in 2018. And my, my statement was this, it seems to me we're creating a problem we don't need to create. And the solutions that are coming out of this are creating even more problems. So, you know, you create diversion because of tolling, so therefore we need, we have the answer. We can come up with congestion pricing. All to say, those are just more and more negative impacts to everyone in the region, businesses, employees, every citizen in the region is going to be impacted by this. And, and really, the solution's simple. You know, okay, we're going to be transitioning from gas tax to a road user fee for cars that are electric. Electric will pay their fair share. There's, so there can be a road, we could just transition the gas tax to the road user fee and, you know, and, and phase that. And, and that, that's the funding source. It's simple. We don't need to create several, literally, I must just tell you, several hundred million dollars of administration to, to administer this tolling congestion pricing schemes, if you will, on, on the backs of everyone when we don't really need it. And then, then we, but we can, we could provide mitigation for, you know, the very low-income people and, and people of color and all that, which is great. But we're really creating an administration we don't need to create and we're creating a system of which has, has no benefit and will discourage commerce, enterprise, and those businesses are the people that employ us all, employ, employ our citizens. So just, I just want to be people mindful of really what we're up against. And I know that the, seems to be the opposition and the word about tolling or congestion pricing is getting more, more known and more public. And I think we really need to make, make our case known. And again, I go back to my opening comments. I want to thank our Board for the values and the, and the material, the work that we did on, on Wednesday. It really gives us the opportunity to, to express our values and our concerns on behalf of the citizens of Clackamas County. So thank you for that and I, that concludes my thoughts for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. A few things that I want to mention about, since we met on Tuesday, to let you know what I've been working on. I had the opportunity of testifying for the Ways and Means Committee for the Department of Human Services budget. And one key issue for us at Clackamas County is reimbursement for case management for developmental disabilities program. There is a workload model and best practice shows that case managers should have 45 individuals per case manager for their caseloads. And in Clackamas County, we have much higher than that. Just a little bit of a highlight on some of the things that have happened during this last year with the terrible tragedies that we've dealt with, with the wildfires, the ice storms, and with COVID. During the ice storms and wildfires, these case managers reached out to every single person, 2,100 individuals that receive services from Clackamas County. They really are another form of our first responders in dealing with health and safety for our most vulnerable. So it's important that the state, this is a required service that we provide for the state of Oregon and it really needs to be compensated appropriately. So was able to testify on that. Also, Commissioner Schrader and I participated in the strategy regarding the Clackamas County Prosperity Collaboratives. So this is something that Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Schrader are very familiar with because it's been a board priority. But what we did was we identified three communities, really based on census tract, that are the most affected by poverty and instigated a pilot project to look at how can we provide a, it's really a human-based, human-centered design, universe, they have all these fancy words, but a way to talk to the people to say, what do you need to have better prosperity? And so many lessons learned. It was really inspiring going through the list and hearing from the folks involved with this project of all of the really great lessons learned. And I'm hoping that sometime soon, Gary, we can bring this back and get the, the whole Board educated on what Commissioner Schrader and I had the opportunity to get, to learn about yesterday. But more to come on that, but good news there. And then last week, Chair Smith and you, on the side of I-5, had the opportunity of also voting with us, with our standing with you to our Clackamas County Asian and Pacific Islander residents. And that was a pretty awesome effort from this Board to stand with members of our community. And on Sunday, I was reading my New York Times, Sunday mornings, I get that, and there is this wonderful poem in there that says, "A word, please." And I read it and read it and read it and pondered on it and pondered on it. And I was really interested in what this was. And at the bottom, it says, "Watch the film at callitcovid.com." And so I did that and it's a very short little presentation. Wyden Kennedy, you know, local homegrown, has been part of this campaign and I wanted to share that with our Commissioners. I think that in light of the racial justice movement, the unrest that's happening, the senseless death of Daunte Wright, and the, all of the things that are going on, it's important for us to remain vigilant and compassionate and aware of what's going on. And so with that, I'm going to ask Christine to play this very concise reading of a poem.
Once it's been heard, it becomes a belief, a reason for some when. A word, please. A word is, just a word is, just a word is, not just a word, not. Once it's been heard, it becomes a belief, a reason for someone's grief, fear, confusion, causes actions. A sign on a restaurant window, Chinese not welcome here. A slur on a car door, fucking chink, go home, disappear. A clenched fist meets her back, her arms, her face, get out of our. of our United States, her face, her face, her face, a face spit on, kicked on, painted on, disinfectant sprayed on, acid splashed on, knife slashed on. No, no, you're right. You weren't holding that knife. How could you have known? How could you possibly know what a word could do unless it was said about you? How could you know that negative comments about people of Asian descent increased 167% a week after a word was said? Now, it's too late to take it back. Now, we're just rarely keeping track of over 1,000 reports of discrimination and counting, and that's just counting the ones that were reported. What about the ones that were left unsaid? How many thought, this can't be happening? And if it is, should I even say anything? I'm just grateful to be here. So what actually happened? How could you know? How could you know what it feels like to call your parents, not just to talk, not to ask them, hey, how was your walk, but to ask them, please, don't go outside, there's something happening worldwide. Mom, cover up not just your nose, your mouth, but your eyes, your hair, your voice, you hide everything about yourself. Don't let them see you. Don't let them recognize you. This virus does not discriminate. People do. But hey, it's just a word, right? How could you know what a word could do unless it was said about you? Unless you were me, then maybe you'd call it COVID-19.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Fisher. Is that it? Okay, great. I will be brief in my comments as this meeting is running long today. I am seeking stories from people out there who've had their lives uprooted by COVID-19. Whether you have lost a job, been rehired, and then laid off again through this entire last year of this pandemic, how you're having trouble with paying your rent, paying your mortgage payment, paying your car payments, or any other disruption in your lives, I am seeking your personal stories. Please email me at vcc@clackamas.us. Hashtag, subject line, just put Tulie Smith in there, sell your story, and I will get those. And I'm attempting to try to figure out how this board can help our people and our businesses with possibly some relief money coming from the federal government. I am not promising anything, but I do indeed want to hear your stories. Maybe some of you have prospered. I would like to hear how you have prospered, and maybe that's an example for the people who have not prospered. But I think these stories are very important. I think people have been silenced from speaking out. I think people have been silenced from admitting that maybe they have lost their jobs, or they're embarrassed, or they're ashamed that they're in financial trouble. And I don't want them to be silenced any longer with that. So email me at vcc@clackamas.us. Thank you very much. And seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.